It's 5:00. Let's call a meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the December 23 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, only one set of meeting minutes. Announcements. The Select Board will meet on the following dates. Monday, January 27 for our regular meeting beginning at 5:00 PM. Followed by, at 5:15, we'll have the first public hearing for this year's upcoming budget. The second public budget hearing will be on Thursday, February 6, also at 5:15 PM. And that's a Thursday, just to make it easier for folks who can't make it on Mondays, to spread that out. Town offices will be closed on Monday, January 20 in observance of Martin Luther King Jr/Civil Rights Day. Citizens wishing to be listed on the Select Board's agenda should notify Town Hall before noon the Thursday before the scheduled meeting. All meetings are held upstairs in Town Hall and online information on Zoom, and you can get that at plymouthnh.gov. All right, on to the Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Zach. First update on the 25-26 budget. The Select Board finalized their budget and capital improvement plan on December 16 at their scheduled budget meeting at 1:00 PM at Town Hall. The first public budget hearing will occur on January 27 at 5:15 at Town Hall. And the second public budget hearing will occur on February 6 at 5:15 at Town Hall. Our goal has been to continue budgeting conservatively for 25-26. All of those that wish to take a look at the proposed budget, it is on the town website under the Budget Timeline. And it's titled Proposed Budget. Town Clerk update for quarter four. As Amy and Melinda reflect on all that has taken place in their office over this past year, they would like to thank all residents who've supported them during this time. They feel lucky to work for the town and work with residents daily. This past quarter was successfully ran, this past quarter, they successfully ran the November election with the help of many wonderful volunteers. Motor vehicle registrations processed in the amount of 1,470 transactions, which is 28 less than the previous year. Vital records came in at 186, with 14 marriage licenses applied for and two dog registered. Thank you for a great year, and we look forward to serving you again this year. Welfare Director update. In December, during the month of December, Mary Ann worked on 51 cases that were received. The cases ranged from assistance with rent, electricity, heat, water and sewer invoices, housing and burial expenses. Mary Ann attended and secured the 2025 weather homeless funds for $4,000. Mary Ann and I will be meeting with Sean Dougherty, the Executive Director at the Bridge House, on January 23 for a tour of the facility and further discussion. As I review Mary Ann's report and speak with her weekly, the cases become more complex. Mary Ann is diligent while being compassionate about resolution and facilitating assistance. Ambulance invoicing for 25-26. I've worked with Chief Pierce and Administrative Assistant John Goodwin in calculating the associated ambulance costs for the four contracted towns, Ashland, Holdenus, Bridgewater, and Rumney, based on the proposed 25-26 budget. As with last year, the calculations are based on invoicing the actual cost for service. In return, the contracted towns would receive from insurances to include Medicare, Medcomp, private pay, and at the end of the contract year, that can be applied towards the following year or receive a check. So this year, when working with Kevin and Jen, we incorporated all of the associated costs, which includes Ann's time, my time, as well as everything included. So I think this year, the cost for 25-26 will be $1,346 per call, which we will bill each town at the end of each quarter for that. Town of Plymouth Welcome Letter. As previously discussed, I would like to get your thoughts, thoughts of the Board on a Town of Plymouth Welcome Letter for those individuals new to Plymouth. I believe it could increase resident engagement by sending a welcome letter to those that buy property and move into town as renters. There is a draft in your package for review tonight. Information Technology RFP. We received four proposals from the RFP that was issued in October. The closing date was Tuesday, November 26 at 4:30 PM. We have interviewed our top vendor, and department heads have met with the vendor to ask questions and express any concerns. Our plan is to transition to Connections/Susan on February 1, 2025, with the Select Board approval. So with this being said, we have a contract that I will sign upon your approval for $12,591, which takes us from February 1 through June 30, 2025. And the full year is roughly around $30,000, depending on which package we take in the increase year-over-year. The cost that this would have been associated with CCS is $14,610. And if you look at the total savings, including the police, the fire, and the library, it's over $30,000 in savings for IT services amongst all of the departments. So with your permission, after Ted's careful review and his recommendations to move forward with Connections, as well as all of the department heads are very satisfied with the meetings that they have with them, I would like to execute that tomorrow and move forward, starting February 1 in this first small contract period.
I'll make a motion that we accept and move forward the contract with Connections/Susan for the noted prices. Neil?
Do you want a second? I did take a look at the proposals. Well, it looked good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Roadwork construction bidding. Mike Fignalli from KV Partners, who has engineered both Russell Street project and the Loom Lake Road cover project, will be advertising the construction bid process for both projects during the third week of January. Our hope is that both projects will kick off in the spring of 2025. We are currently waiting for additional information with regards to the Highland Street project back from New Hampshire Department of Transportation and HEB for the final plans and funding for the project. We are able to and receive permission from New Hampshire Department of Transportation to start with preliminary design plans with HEB, and you'll find a purchase order in your packet for later. Town available vacancies. The Town Clerk has hereby given notice to the residents of Plymouth, New Hampshire that the town has several seats on town boards that are up for election on Tuesday, March 11, 2025. The filing period begins on Wednesday, January 22, 2025, and runs through Friday, January 31, 2025, at 5:00 PM. Candidates must file a declaration of candidacy with the Office of the Town Clerk to be included on the ballot on Tuesday, March 11, 2025. To be qualified for an office, candidates must have and maintain a domicile in the town and be registered to vote. So the vacancies that are currently open is two selectmen positions for a three-year term, one moderator, two-year term, one town clerk, three-year term, one tax collector, three-year term, one supervisor of the checklist, six-year term, one trustee of the trust fund, three-year term, one trustee of the trust fund, two-year term, one library trustee, three-year term, and one cemetery trustee, three-year term. Anybody with questions with regards to candidacy should contact Town Clerk Amy Lee at the Plymouth Town Hall. Employment opportunities with the Town of Plymouth. We have the following opportunities available. Full-time police officer, a full-time highway worker slash mechanic. We fill the full-time highway maintainer position. We have a full-time highway foreman position available, and a firefighter/EMT currently available. Other important things to note. I would like to thank Plymouth State University for the downtown free holiday parking from December 11 through December 31, 2024. It's certainly allowed for additional parking in the downtown area. It is safe to see. The lots were full for most days. Important dates to remember. Mentioned the first public hearing, the second public hearing. Election Day is March 11 at Plymouth Elementary School from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Town meeting will be held at Plymouth Elementary School, March 12 at 7:00 PM. All of my monthly messages and reports are included on the town website under the Town Manager tab at the top of the page. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions for Scott?
I have none.
Just one other thing real quick, Zach. I forgot. The annual candidate night will be held on February 20 at Pease Public Library at 6:30 PM. Mike Conklin, Kathy Kelsey, and Val Scarborough are putting that together again this year.
Let me capture that for myself right now.
It is at 6:30 PM on February 20 at Pease Public Library.
Library. All right. Are we streaming that as well?
Excuse me?
Are we going to stream that as well with PMSV?
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe some of the appointments.
Slightly early. Let's do some appointments. So we have a letter from Lisa Ash that's actually sort of somewhat encompassing, but I'll go through all. So she's recommending all four of these appointments on the top letter, and I'll just quickly go through the letters that are in here. So we've got a letter from Alani Panagoulis that says, Dear Plymouth Board of Selectmen, I'm writing this letter because I understand my position in the Plymouth Parks and Recreation Commission is up for renewal. I've enjoyed serving on this board as the Chair of the Board since 2014. I intend to continue serving on this committee. Please let me know if you need any further information. Have any questions, Alani Panagoulis?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Alani Panagoulis to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we've got a letter from Brian DeTyle that says, Dear Select Board members, I'm ready to apply for reappointment to the Plymouth Parks and Rec Board. I believe we've done some great work on the board. Very proud of the programs and accomplishments of the department. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to my continued service to the Town of Plymouth. Sincerely, Brian DeTyle.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Brian DeTyle to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then from Andy McDonald. Dear Select Board members, I'm writing to apply for reappointment to the Plymouth Parks and Rec Board. I have served as a Commissioner for a number of years and enjoyed my time on the board tremendously. In closing, I hope to get a chance to continue serving the Plymouth community. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Andy McDonald.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Andy McDonald to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are these, just realizing I was going to check this, but I don't need to probably. These are all until 2028, just for reference. And then the last one from Mark McGlon. Dear Select Board members and Town Manager Whedon, I'm writing to apply for reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Board. I've served as Commissioner for the past 14 years, and I've enjoyed my time on the board tremendously. Recently, I assisted in the process of restructuring the Parks and Recreation Departments within the past three years, and look forward to more growth and expansion in the future. Closing, I hope to get a chance to continue serving the Plymouth community. Thank you for your consideration. Mark McGlon.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mark McGlon to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's good. You got the board all refilled again. Is that four positions on that board?
I don't remember what the total number is.
I just know because you go to that.
Michael Bouchard.
What's that?
Did they do Michael Bouchard yet?
Not yet. No, we'll do.
Later.
Honestly, probably take us two seconds. Let's do that one real quick. From Joe Perez. The Planning Board recommended in favor of the Select Board appointing Michael Bouchard to take over the full member seat that was made available on the Planning Board by the resignation of Mark Sturgeon. I've attached Michael Bouchard's letter requesting the appointment here. And then Michael Bouchard's letter says, Dear Mr. Whedon and Select Board members, I'm writing to formally submit my candidacy for the open full-member seat on the Plymouth Planning Board. Currently, I am serving on this board as a senior alternate member for the past few years. With a strong background in business development, marketing, and engineering, along with my deep commitment to community development and urban planning, I'm eager to continue contributing my skills and experience to this board. Having lived in Plymouth for the past 12 years, I've developed a profound appreciation for the unique characteristics of our community, as well as the complexities involved in planning and its continued growth and prosperity. Thank you for considering my candidacy. I look forward to the possibility of contributing to the planning efforts that support the well-being and success of our community. Sincerely, Sir Michael Bouchard.
I'll make a motion to reappoint, to appoint Michael Bouchard as a full member to the Plymouth Planning Board.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That opens an alternate position now?
That's correct.
Do you have someone who's looking to fill that, or is that?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll check in with Joseph tomorrow to see if, unless Phil knows if there's anybody.
You don't know of anybody who's attending and itching to become an alternate? We've done well over the past few years having a full bench of alternates.
And I will say the alternates are all that depend, so they're always up to speed on discussions. It's been very useful. And any of them could easily slide in and take a seat and contribute in positive way.
Yeah. And there are nights that other members can't make it. Those are long meetings, so those alternates get seated more often probably than other boards.
I will note that the Select Board has been absent on a few occasions.
Officially, we don't, officially, we don't have one at the moment. But yes.
Joseph, I was just kidding.
It was, and then.
We have, there have been a few nights where it's the Select Board's representative.
Yeah, this year, we didn't, we didn't stay at an alternate, so we don't officially have one, but. No, 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 I don't mind, but we are going to have to get serious about it in the new year with Neil stepping off the board, so. Yeah, it may make sense for me to start getting up to speed on that sooner rather than later.
Right here.
All right, well, let's open a public hearing. It is 5:17. Plymouth Select Board is holding a public hearing in accordance with RSA 3195B for the acceptance of unanticipated funds from Grafton County ARPA funds in the amount of $19,046. The purpose of this grant is to upgrade and install new streetlight fixtures and replace lighting heads in very low-lit areas within town. Scott, do you want to introduce this?
Sure. So we were, became aware of that there were ARPA funds through Grafton County. So we immediately put in our request with regards to our detailed narrative to upgrade some of the streetlight fixtures and replace lighting heads in the low-lit areas on crosswalks. So we did receive the $19,046, which was split up over a number of, the total amount was split up over a number of towns in Grafton County that applied. So we have ordered the upgraded lighting heads, as well as two poles that will service down by the Enterprise Center, here on Main Street across from Town Hall, and down at the crosswalk from Peekaboo over to NAMIS. That is the plan for using those funds.
All right. Any public comment on the lighting?
Not specifically on the lighting, but I know most of you or all of you, and I just wanted, thought this was an appropriate time. I'm your new county commissioner from District 3. I'm Katie Hedberg here in Plymouth. And I'm always, would be happy to hear from anything that came up with town that I may have missed. I appreciate the weekly updates, so I thought this was a good time tying in with the county to introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to have you here. Grace?
Grace Garvey. Just wondered, are we doing LED lights in those?
That is the hope, yes.
That's great. Thank you. I was curious, as was the rest of the commission. Thank you.
And I know Jesse has reached out to Ashley with regards to this project as well.
Any other public comments? Anybody online? Look like it. All right, well, at 5:20, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the Board.
With that, I'll make a motion to accept the amount of $19,046 from the Grafton County ARPA funds to install new light fixtures and replace lighting heads downtown.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Nine minutes. What fits in nine minutes?
Purchase order? Or signature file?
Probably. We could do the Town of Plymouth Welcome Letter real quick. That one should be short. Do you want to introduce the, this letter? Do you want to discuss it at all, Scott?
This is the.
Welcome.
Welcome letter?
Welcome letter?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just jumping forward because I think we can get through it quickly.
So what I did was work with Terry in assessing and put together a welcome letter that I tried to capture a strong sense of community. I tried to capture promoting the things that we are so proud of in Plymouth. The common, the downtown, the village commercial, the waterfront, the trails that we have in Plymouth that people can use, as well as guiding people to the town website to look at information for departments, department heads, as well as getting them to subscribe to the weekly newsletter that goes out. I wanted to try to keep it one page so that it wasn't overwhelming to them when they received the letter from the Assessing Department, but those were my thoughts as I went through. I looked at several different models from different communities with regards to what they do, both New Hampshire communities and some out in the Midwest, as well as in the southeast coastal area. And this is really what I came up with with regards to welcoming folks to the Town of Plymouth. And I'm open to any edits, comments, or changes that the Board would like to see in the letter. I'd be happy to read it if folks would like to hear what's in the letter. Okay. Dear new resident, on behalf of the entire community of Plymouth, we extend a warm welcome to you and your family as you settle into your new home. We are thrilled to have you join our vibrant and welcoming town. Explore our thriving downtown area with many local businesses, restaurants, shopping options, and the rich heritage to include the Town Common and the Waterfront Park. In the summer, you will find our Keniston-Freeman Summer Concert Series occurring at both locations. The Town of Plymouth is known for its strong sense of community with diverse neighborhoods and friendly people. Our Recreation Department offers a wide variety of programming for youth in the community, as well as our aging population. Please visit the recreation website at, enjoy outdoor recreation areas to include the Walter Newton and Favre East Conservation Trails and the Plymouth Mountain Track. Please visit the conservation page on the town website for additional information. Additionally, Fox Park is a great resource which includes a recreation area and playground. Learn about local municipal services to include Town Departments, Public Library, Recreation, Police, Fire Rescue, Recycling, Parks, Planning and Development, and the Highway Department by visiting the town website. Stay informed by subscribing to our town newsletter for updates on news, events, and important announcements. We encourage you to reach out to your neighbors and get involved in the community. If you have questions or need assistance in getting settled, please don't hesitate to contact Town Hall. Welcome to Plymouth. We are excited to be, excited to be a part of your story. Sincerely.
I have one observation, Scott.
Yep.
Stay informed by subscribing. We're not telling them how to subscribe.
Yep. I will add that in there.
Yep, that's a good, good point. Otherwise, this looks great.
Yeah, it looks great.
Okay. I will make that edit, and then we'll get it in place.
It's great. It will be quick, but four minutes.
We do the signature file for sure.
Do you have signature file stuff, Anne?
Oh, I only have one item.
Well, let's hit it.
So I have an intent to cut timber. And this property is on Bartlett Road. Anticipating to be start on the 13th. Sometimes it tells me how much it's going to be cut, but not on this particular one. Has been checked by Assessing and ready to go. The other item is the purchase order I have.
The purchase order that we have on the agenda. Well, given that I don't think this public hearing is going to be particularly contentious, I'm going to start it early. 5:26, opening a public hearing. The Plymouth Select Board will hold a public hearing in accordance with RSA 3195B for the acceptance of unanticipated funds donations from the Plymouth Recreation Department, Plymouth Leisure Association for you, PLAY, in the amount of $16,000. Purpose of this donation is to assist expenses associated to the Plymouth Parks and Recreation Department. These funds will be held in escrow account specific to this purpose. So yeah, we got to have a check from PLAY.
So with this being said, this is something that Anne and I have just been discussing for a while now, and it finally had time to look into it a little bit further and meet with Lisa and seek her input with regards to the PLAY account. And from a financial liability perspective, and really looking at procurement and assessing the liability that's associated with this account, is that we feel it's better to bring this account into an escrow account with the Town of Plymouth, as we do with many others, such as the Beautification Committee and several other accounts we have. That way, we know that it's being properly managed, it's being audited, and anytime that the Recreation Department or the Commission would like to use funds out of this, all it requires is a request to myself or the Board to expend funds for the purpose of XYZ, and those funds will be dispersed out of that account. It's just a better accounting practice for financial, looking at financial liability. And Lisa and the Commission were all in favor of moving this into an escrow account and not having it hanging out there with Lisa being the sole signature on this account. So that was the purpose of moving it into escrow.
So this is basically, this was their full balance of their account, just donated into this escrow account?
There is some funds of about $300 remaining. She just has year-end financial reportings that she has to do. And that's Lisa and the chairman, yeah, Laney. Once that is complete, the rest of the funds will follow.
Gotcha. And that fund, historically, what has that been for?
That fund is some of the monies that are used for the ski and skate sale. It's been used for the fishing derby. It's been used to reimburse or pay people to do things outside of what an employee would do. So really, a very versatile account that was used to take in primarily ski and skate sale.
Yeah, but all kind of self-funding sort of stuff.
Right, exactly.
And how long has this account been in existence previously?
How many years is this?
Yeah.
It goes back probably. It goes back probably, I'm going to guess at this, about 35 to 50 years.
It's a long time.
Long time.
Long time.
And my concern is if you have one person writing checks out of it from a transparency perspective and from a liability perspective, it's best to have multiple signatures on that account, which they currently don't have. And this way, it puts it into an account in escrow that the town manages and it's properly audited year over year.
Yeah. Yeah, it feels like a... Shouldn't give them too much extra burden and the safety of it seems...
And like I said, they all were very much in favor of it, and that's why we waited to hear back from them and have a conversation with them to make sure they were in favor of this process, and they were.
Great. Public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 5:31. As expected, not controversial.
And I'll make a motion to accept the unanticipated funds donations from the Plymouth Recreation Department in the amount of $16,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that takes us to HEB Engineering, the Highland Street Project.
So this is a purchase order in front of you. We received approval last week that we could move forward with the preliminary plan design for the Highland Street Project. And the amount that has been authorized is the $142,496. We are still waiting on funding for the final plan design, but this will at least get us started in moving the project forward. So it was approved by State of New Hampshire to move forward with HEB on this. And the state's portion of it, as it states on the purchase order, is $113,997, and the town's portion would be $28,499.
Okay? When I'm reading this letter that came from DOT, what's the... I don't think I understand the difference between the participating funds column here and the comments. So in that participating funds column, it says $257,000, but then authorized $142? Was the... Is that 257 like an estimate?
That's our total for that particular piece.
So there's going to be additional expenditures?
It's over a $2 million project.
No, but will there be additional engineering expenditures?
Yes.
Okay.
But in order to get them going, we need that first that will approve by the board.
Okay.
And we do have our offset already.
Okay.
Generally, you can expect your engineering costs to be about 10% of what your project is.
10%?
Rule of thumb.
Yeah, well, that's in the ballpark.
Yeah.
That's what it'll probably come out to.
Anything else?
Nothing else for me.
All right, well, I'll make the motion to approve the HEB engineering portion of the Highland Street Project in the sum total of $142,496, of which $28,499 is a town expense, with $113,997 for the state.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's get that signed. Does this operate? Okay, we have Stuart Arnett from Arnett Development Group for initial discussion on economic development.
Yes, Stuart, would you like to come up and sit with us up here?
Please join us.
Right here.
Yeah, anywhere he likes, fine.
Any place with a mic.
So a while back, the board asked me to search out and reach for those folks in New Hampshire that have been successful in working with different municipalities with regards to economic development since the project we had going with Plymouth State University kind of fell off the map. So Stuart was one that I researched and reached out to several municipalities that he has worked with in the past. And he has made proposals to the Town of Plymouth in the past for work to be done here. But I asked Stuart if he'd come in tonight and talk to a little bit... Talk to us a little bit about what his thoughts are on economic development and how we could pull something together here in Plymouth to forge forward. I did provide Stuart with the 2018 master plan as well. I did let him know that the Town of Plymouth had received a Housing Opportunity Program grant for $25,000, which is going to work on a downtown village commercial portion of a master plan. So Stuart, I don't know if you have some introductory comments that you'd like to make in moving this conversation forward.
Thank you, Scott. Nice to be back in Plymouth. I'm trying to think how many times we've auditioned here, including during COVID, which was very interesting because we did it by Zoom. And there was about 40 people on other Zoom things, which made it a very interesting thing. And then a couple before since. We also had a meeting here a couple years ago with your Water and Sewer Commission when they were talking about trying to make a joint downtown district and some of the things. It didn't quite happen. And I'm happy to say that your vice chairman and I have been colleagues for a long time, so probably that's why he drags me back here as often as he has. Happy to be here. Just a quick introduction, because what I see this as an initial discussion, so I want to make sure we have discussion. ADG, which is the trade name or the company, is an LLC. It's a for-profit registered in the state of Hampshire. We're in our 18th year. We're in Concord. I'll talk about we, and you'll see there's only me sitting here, so it's not delusional. It's mainly people. We have a lot of 1099s. We use a lot of contractors, either specialists in their areas or we've contracted with regional planning commissions, regional development corporations. We find that's the best way to kind of bring the right team together for smaller communities. We are a mission-driven organization. We try to work on communities that we call comeback communities, communities that have been through the cycle of being high at one time, for whatever reasons, have had a decline over time. Oftentimes, not because of their fault, but just life, but are working hard to try to come back in a different, in a positive way. And I think I would put Plymouth in that category. And we do consulting and some planning work, but we're better at being a project manager and an implementer and helping people do projects. So one of the things that manager we mentioned was you're working on your master plan. We have done chapters of master plans, economic development. But we stopped doing full master plans a few years ago because I think some other organizations, like regional planning commissions and stuff, do that better. But we're very anxious to try to do projects, make things happen. In the last year or so, you've... Different people from Plymouth have worked with us. I'm happy to say we've had... We're in year four of a contract with the state Business and Economic Affairs, BEA, where we have a contract with them to help either nonprofits or municipalities who are eligible under the Northern Border Regional Commission program, which Plymouth has been in and out of eligibility. We provide coaching services for applicants to help them get through the pre-application and application stage. And it's been really nice because it's had a very high success rate. Our number of both applications that have been submitted and also the ones that have been funded with coaching versus the ones that haven't is... It's almost like four or five to one, depending which round. We are HOP certified. That sounds strange, but Housing Opportunity Program is HOP. And we are one of the certified organizations. And I have an outline of just kind of how we look at economic development. I'll pass that out, but I'm first going to stop talking then and let you ask some questions because this is... Advertises a discussion, so it would help me to kind of understand what's your thinking. I know that the board has several times before talked about how does the community get going here? Who do they give things to? How do they set priorities? How does the select board support that, but not necessarily on a daily basis drive it? So maybe with those introductory statements, I'll back off a little bit and see what would be helpful.
Just a few questions I have, Stuart, is when... You know, when we started this, we had a project, a cluster project that we were working on with Plymouth State University. And there really wasn't any direction where this committee was going to go. And looking at your 360 opportunity assessment, can you talk about that a little bit with regards to data analysis and the insights that will come from this type of assessment? And what the predictive modeling will be in forecasting that would come from an assessment like this?
Yeah, and it obviously depends on what your outcome is. And I'll just quickly explain that chart for you. So over the years, working with a bunch of people, we've did the thing which everybody's tried to do. How come some projects work and some others don't? You have the same team on one. And so one of the things we came up with was that projects often need to go through three real simple stages. The thinking stage, the getting of resources stage, and then the final doing stage. So that's the first, you see, the stages they were think, get, do. It's a little bit of the ready, fire, aim issue of where towns oftentimes, communities, nonprofits, can say, "We need to do something," and they jump in and they start doing something before they've really thought it through or before they've lined up their resources. So that's one of the tenets is try to figure out what stage you're in. Are you in the thinking stage, which would be market research, would be competitive analysis to other organizations, would be stealing good ideas from other people, just that kind of thinking, research piece? Or are you in the position of, and/or the position of, getting what you need, getting the teamwork, getting the leadership, getting the funding, getting the permits, whatever it is, getting the control of the site, if that's a project that has real estate involved? And then finally, the implementation plan of who's going to do what, when, what's the outcomes expected? So that there isn't a... You don't go down the road and people said, "I thought the idea was to have this." We thought it was this. So that's the kind of the three core thing. The other thing, the four arrows, is very simply, hopefully, is to say, we often found also the projects tended to look at... Not all four, and they are money, market, people, place. And the idea is to do an assessment of each of those. So the money issues are easy. You know, what are the tax implications? What's the budget? What's the investment interest? Anything along those lines. Market is... As an example, we've had communities that are... When farmers markets were such a hot thing, everybody wanted to do a farmer's market. And then they would... Can you look around and see if there are other farmer's markets close by? And we had one community that found three within about a 15-minute drive, and they wanted... And two of them were on the same day they wanted to do it. So just some real simple market analysis of if... You know, is this... If you want to have a farmer's market, make sure it's... There are farmers that want to be there, and there's not... The market isn't oversaturated already. Or if you're trying to do a high-end housing project, then your market research says that's not your market. Just some there. And none of your steps have to be real elaborate. Often just be talking to local people and get a sense of what the market is and different things. The people one is real interesting. That is, do these people like the idea? Is it part of your vision? How do the neighbors feel? Do you have leadership? Do you have followership? Do you have both officers and infantry kind of thing? And then the last one is the place itself. If you're talking about some place, is it... You know, how's its location as far as a competitive site? Is it zoned for that? Is it got water sewer? Is it brownfield? Those sort of things. And even looking at the place of Plymouth, you know, where does it fit in the northeast as far as a regional thing? How's it fit as far as interstates? All those kind of things. So just by getting people to kind of think about those, you keep some organizations from zooming past one of them and getting, having spent all their money on a project and then found out that, "Oh, by the way, the neighbors don't want this to happen." Or, "By the way, there's another one of these coming up, you know, two months from now down the road." So that's the kind of way I would say, Scott, is to sort of keep that in mind. And then, especially, I think, in the people section, that's probably where you would deal with some of the... You know, who's going to drive the bus? Who, you know, I think this group has done a... You have a good master plan. It's not that old. But there's a lot of directions you can go. Is this... Is your concern primary property taxes? Or is it primarily retention of young people? Or is it primarily better utilization of the university assets? Or is it predominantly taking advantage of the cultural amenities being offered by the university? Or is it... There's a lot of potential strategies there. That's part of the thinking stage. So depending on where you want to come out, I would just recommend that we kind of think about those. And then going back to your question about assessment and analysis, it would depend on what we're trying to assess. And then, you know, if it's a strategy for the community, it's going to be one data set. If it's a strategy for what do we do with this corner lot, it's obviously going to be a different one.
Would you... Something that seemed successful when we went through our first HOP grant in talking about some of the zoning, the housing, and some of the things that came into that project was something that seemed very successful was holding public meetings. So when you create an assessment, opportunity assessment like this, is that part of it that you would hold public meetings to seek input from aspects of the community? Is that what you do?
Yeah, again, it depends on what it is that we're talking about. But if it's a broader strategy question, absolutely. If a municipality is going to be directing its development, not just its economic development, but its development overall, then you will not get very far at all without a pretty strong consensus behind you. This is a state that's pretty easy to slow things down if you have two or three determined opponents. So the consensus building early is pretty important, both in the general sense, where do we want the community to be in five, 10 years? That's the kind of bigger. And then more specific is if we talk about this parking lot that no one knows quite what to do with, then you'd want to obviously have that kind of conversation with, certainly with at least the surrounding neighbors.
I mean, I think...
By the way, I probably shouldn't know this, but I don't know what the project was that started and stopped. Can you give me a little on that?
I mean, what I can tell you is that the university has moved into doing cluster projects. So they take a community problem or a region's problem, and they create classes that help with those types of issues that they're facing. And part of those classes is having the students, university students, do research and modeling and developing plans and coming back in front of a committee, so to speak, and presenting those and trying to come up with a final dissertation on how their solutions will work. Might not be one solution. It might be two solutions. It might be three solutions. Unfortunately, it really didn't get off the ground, and it kind of fell through the loopholes. So, I mean, I think at least some of my thoughts are is that, you know, all the things that you've talked about in, you know, looking at what the data sets are, how do we make sure that we are attracting talent to the area? But again, we need housing to attract talent to the area. And how are we creating retention for those that are graduating high school and going to Plymouth State University or some other local university or wherever it may be to come back to Plymouth and join back into the community and be helpful? But the other thing is really looking at the infrastructure that the town has, and how do we optimize... how do we optimize what we have and what do we need to make us more attractive to a diff, to the, to the data, you know, analysis of what we find? But, I mean, it sounds interesting to me to have an assessment done to kind of say, these are the areas that you really should be looking at based on your, your vision, your mission, your values, your master plan, what you're doing with the housing opportunity program to get some type of foundation that we can build off of.
In fact, I think you went three, forced around the four arrows there because you're talking about the place and the people.
Exactly.
And it, there's nothing magical, it's just makes, it's, it's a way of making sure you don't leave a big one behind at this, and you get down the road and find out that, whoops, we forgot to ask, you know, about DES permits or something like that. Was the, was the cluster function the community overall, or was it focused on a site or?
We were focusing kind of on the downtown area.
Okay.
That was the initial-
Yeah, but not like a specific-
Okay.
Piece of land or property or anything.
Okay.
But the conversation started about the downtown area. How do we connect the downtown area to the waterfront? How do we connect the waterfront to the trails?
So our questions were asked, but not much came back?
We never really got to a point where we had any concrete conversations about what it meant.
Okay.
I mean, just being completely honest, it just didn't get there.
And to be completely honest, we'd be happy to help you also, other people who might do some other pieces that we can't kind of, I say, we're, hopefully, we're mission-driven. But it, it sounds like maybe an early step would be a couple Saturday mornings with some key people to, you know, maybe it's a scoop or something, or, and just kind of-
Yeah, I definitely think we're-
What are all your issues? And let's get, because you just mentioned a couple, the retention, bringing back graduates, housing, the village development. I did see we've finally got the water sewer thing pretty much worked out downtown. Did I see that?
Yeah, it's all done.
Congratulations. That was a biggie.
Big project, yeah.
That was a biggie. That was a-
Yeah, but I think we are in that thinking phase of trying to-
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, Scott didn't-
Thank you for doing it, because a lot of people want to go, I want this to happen, let's go do something. And-
Scott didn't explicitly mention it, but, you know, implicit in all of the economic development conversations is also tax rate. You know, it's, we are heavily nonprofit here, and our tax rate suffers because of it. And so-
Tell you how, where you are?
Probably what, top 10 anyway.
You're number two, according to DRA in '23, you were number in a, you don't want to be close to, at a 228 talent or 222. So what I call it is you're on page five. So there's a five-page report, and that means there's only five other towns that are, which surprised me. I would have guessed you were more in the middle.
Are you looking at the-
No, I don't-
Supposedly, DRA does an apples-to-apples, because they, they take your coefficient of valuation, and then they run it by, and so it's, nobody likes it, but it's pretty well, they've been doing it for 20 years, and I think it's pretty valid.
And I think the community feels that, that we're, this is one of the most expensive communities to live in, in the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was surprised. I mean, we also do, Town and Bow, we work with, you're going to think we're bad news, or bad luck, but, you know, with their, the coal plant and some other things happening, they went from page one to page five. I mean, so that is a, that is an issue. I would say that if you really look at, I mean, it was really nice to hear the, the surveys of all the stuff going on. I'm going to myself, that's pretty impressive for a small town, all those different committees and this, that, all these things happening. That might be a very good value for that tax dollar. I mean, I've never, we've never, one of our clients right now has a 15 per thousand tax rate, and there's a really angry taxpayer group. And, and another one has a $39 per thousand. And they have an, there's never been a town that people go, oh, that's, that's fair, I think we can just live with that. But I, I think either the need to continue to build up non-residential is going to be one of the things.
Yeah.
You're never going to reduce your taxes just by building commercial, because you can't catch up that fast. It's just, you'd have to be putting on $150 million a year of, but, and also, I think it's very clear to make sure people understand that that's a good value for what they're paying. They're getting a lot of services. They're, they're getting a welcoming community, they're getting an invitation to belong here versus being, what the heck are you here for? We don't want anybody here.
If you, if you truly look at the $10.93 per thousand valuation, you're getting a tremendous amount of service-
Yeah.
For that $10.93-
Yeah, and-
For a thousand valuation.
I mean, things like, I noticed that your fire department physician is also an EMS physician. What does that tell me if I have a spouse or somebody in my family who has a potential of, of a high medical need? Someone who might have a seizure background, or someone who might have a mobility issue. It means when I call the fire department, I'm not going to get a fast squad that's going to get there 45 minutes later. I'm going to get someone who comes, who's also has access or is bringing an EMS with them. There are a lot of services that for a small town Plymouth can offer, and I'm sure there's a love hate, but the, having Plymouth State here is a defining asset base. It's, it does offer cultural amenities and other things that other towns don't have. But it does sound like maybe the, an early step is to continue the conversation of what-
Yeah.
What would be, what, what do we want to do versus, it doesn't sound like you're in a position of saying, we want that intersection to become a shopping center tomorrow, how do we make it happen? It sounds like that would be jumping in front. But to make the, the focus, the village downtown, I think makes perfect sense, because to me, that's your, that's probably your core asset.
Yeah. Is, is what you would do is to provide us a proposal on what 360 opportunity assessment would look like for the town? I, I'm, I'm wondering, how, how do you move forward from here with what we've, you know, briefly discussed tonight, but you have an idea of where we're looking at and the things that we need to explore further?
Yeah. And if you don't mind me volunteering some of your time, or some of whoever else you think, just maybe finding out a little bit more about what already exists, so we're not suggesting. Want to get some sense of your budget. Typically, we like to do, believe it or not, is do smaller bites and do them in steps versus saying, here is a big long, because we are in a position of saying, if it now is, makes sense to give it to somebody else, that's okay. But maybe if, if we can, maybe spill out a little bit more of what some of those steps might be. But it sounds like it's, it's some conversation on, directed conversation with a wider leadership interested citizen group. We've worked with college projects before. There was a, before HOP, there was a thing called MTAG, Municipal Technical Assistance Grants, that came out. And that model was also using the cooperative extension service model. And it had exact, it had some really strong points because it brought some people into the area, but it didn't have legs because students graduated and people moved on. So I guess my inconcluses is, I'd be happy to work with you on something that might make sense. Or if it doesn't, with us, point to somebody that does.
So work together, come up with some type of a proposal to bring back to the board for a further review in discussion?
Yeah. And I don't know how your purchasing works, but I would like to have that not be, okay, now we've worked that out, then you have to put it out to bid, because now you're taking our intellectual property, basically. And so just be aware of that.
And I mean, in, in complete transparency, we do have another contractor coming in to have a conversation. I did mention that to you. So I think after, that meeting is on February 10th. So I think after we, I guess I should be directing this to you, Zach.
No, I agree.
Is that after we have that conversation is for the board to make a decision on what direction we may want to head to get a proposal or to work further with one of the two vendors?
Yeah. And one of the things I've, we've done with other towns, I've, one, we have 12-year-old open work order, is just have an open work order, so that, you know, our municipal rate is pretty competitive. And you, when you need something, we're, we're on your pre-approved work order bid, and if we're not, go do something else. That's one way of doing it. And if your other person you're talking to is somebody we can help or something, we'd be happy to do that also. So.
Are you tracking legislation in the legislature or working on proposed legislation?
I, I-
Legislature?
I have, I belong to a couple associations that do, so I don't. Number one, what I hear, there's 1,100 bills already filed for this year.
Are, are you working with state agencies?
Our contract right, our major contract right now is with BEA, right?
DEA?
Business Economic Affairs, which is the new name for my old shop of DREAD. So-
Oh, DREAD. Yeah.
So I was a, long ago, I was the Economic Development Director for the state. So that's how I, what, what came over here. So, yeah, DREAD split up six, eight years ago. The economic business stuff went over here, and the natural resource and trails and stuff stayed up on-
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah. And that's where Bill and I first worked, because he worked for the Secretary of State's office when I was there.
We have a really diverse community. And we have really strong committees in the Energy Commission and the Conservation Commission. The planning board is deeply involved in, in working on proposals for the community.
How, how do you mean working? Are they working on proposals suggesting this is where the community should go, or are you saying they're responding to other people?
I think we applied for our second HOP grant.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we received it.
We got it. So-
Looking at a directed master plan.
That's a comprehensive study.
Yeah.
And we're working on rezoning.
Yeah.
And making zoning upgrades. And we're, we're going to have warrant articles proposing potential major zoning changes. And we have talked over the years about trying to develop along the Tenny Mountain Highway and trying to work with the NHDOT. And we've kind of been having difficulty-
Had those conversations a few years ago.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're struggling with that.
Yeah.
And that's where we probably need help.
Is the, is Electric Co-op site still?
It is.
That was one we worked with for quite a while too. So we never got very far with that, but.
We thought the co-op was going to move over on the Fairground Road, which is a, a secondary state road. But I think they decided to stay where they are for now.
Yeah. So, you know, maybe the proposal is to go through a sort of a pre-planning process with this group and whoever else you think makes some sense will work out something that would work schedule-wise. We can do some onsite, or not, certainly onsite, but also some online questionnaires. Some of the research, maybe put a data packet together for everybody involved, so they understand what really is or isn't. Going to your zoning thing, congratulations for doing that, by the way. But having worked with a lot of zoning boards and stuff now, the zoning regs themselves really can make a difference. But I have found that a bigger difference is who, who sits behind the table on the zoning board. So I've seen some towns with really modern, good zoning regs that can still stop anything from going because they have a couple people that want to stop everything from going. And I've seen some other towns that have 1978 zoning regs. We worked with London Dairy five or six years ago before they, and they had 260 amendments to their zoning regulations. So if you, here's the zoning regs, and then, but they, they were kind of a can-do town, and they became, actually redid them and stuff. So I think the regs are real important, but I think the more important thing is what you said, which is if the planning board is, is taking on the role of trying to make good things happen, not just regulating bad things. And that's, I think, to me, that makes all the difference, because that message comes through pretty clearly that this is a place that's trying to make something happen versus a place that's saying, you know, without giving up quality, is, is just trying to impede. So that's a, that's a great place for the planning board to be.
So how about we follow up after February 10th and have a further conversation?
Yeah. And maybe I'll sketch out some stuff and-
Absolutely.
Vice versa. But I, I think I'm hearing maybe the, a good first step is just some thinking of the leadership and a fairly limited engagement for somebody. And if we can help, we'd be happy to.
Okay. That sounds great.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stuart. Really appreciate it.
Back again.
I will reach out to you over the next couple days.
Okay. Thanks for the initial reach out.
Thank you.
Tell Bill you said hi.
He must be avoiding you tonight.
He owes me lunch or something.
We'll pass that along.
He didn't come tonight.
I think he owes you dinner, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, his dinner now.
I owe you from 10 years ago.
Thank you, Stuart.
Good night.
Thank you. Grace, you are next up, giving us an update on the solar array.
Maybe the final one, I don't know.
Final solar array update.
Um, yeah. So we had ribbon cutting on December 16th. We've been producing, and I think that Jonathan was kind enough to put the webpage up here, and you can actually see that there's a button for watching daily activity, production on the array, which is very exciting. It's right on the homepage now. I don't follow it daily. Jesse, I think, has been following it. This is really exciting. I don't know if I have more of an update. Oh, so we did finally, yeah, this is pretty big, actually. After much laborious trying and trying of applying for the 30% Inflation Reduction Act elective pay process, finally I got on the phone with an IRS guy, and he helped me finally upload the application. And so now we're just playing a little bit of a waiting game. We'll be informed whether we need to give them more information to qualify for the 30%. And if we don't hear that they need more information, then we'll get a registration number, and then Ann can file the tax return. And then I don't, it usually takes, actually, I don't know, I was going to make something up. I've heard six to eight weeks for payment, but I, I don't know if that's accurate or not. But we're well on our way. We did get, we have, we applied for the 10% for the low-income credit. We didn't make the cut in the fall, but we're going to reapply once it reopens in 2025. So I'll just keep following that process and reapply when it opens. I can't think of anything else.
Jesse did meet with Ted, and Jesse does get the email every day with regards to the operation of the solar array.
Mm-hmm.
We did want, have one of the inverters that went down last week, obviously covered under warranty, and they came right up and replaced it, I think, the next day, if I'm not mistaken. So Jesse does oversee that and keeps the log, and if there's problems, he does reach out to Jack or Ted with regards to what the issue may be.
So did Jesse pick up on the fact that one of the inverters wasn't working?
He noted it and called Ted, and Ted came up to confirm it.
Interesting. I didn't know that.
And that was replaced one day last week.
Great.
They came right up- They came right up and, and did it the next day.
Look at that. Success. Well-oiled machine.
It's working well.
Good.
In terms of the earnings that we get off the power, is that a segue into what you were going to say next?
Exactly. So, one thing I'm not clear about, Ann, is on December eighteenth, you sent Bill Johnstone an email. Have we heard back?
I have not.
So, right now, what we get is, you know, we get credits, and there's a new meter there, so that bill comes to Ann's office, and it's, you know, and it's shown as a credit, but what Ann wanted to suss out is to make sure that we just weren't going to get a credit on some bill, but that, as they assured us, once a year, we'll be getting a big lump sum check. And I recall they said March. Scott Johnston said that online here at a Slackboard meeting. I can't imagine that's not going to be the case, but it would be great to hear back from them.
The reason that we are, are concerned about that is because we did tell CDFA that whatever we get for income would go directly back towards that loan within thirty days of receipt of those funds. So, having it be just a credit on the bill really does not work for that purpose.
Gotcha.
So, we want to make, I mean, hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, and whatever it's going to be, we want to make sure that, we want to add as much as we can to get that bill paid off as soon as possible. So, that's what we were talking about.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
This project is only successful if there's money coming back from the co-op.
Right.
I mean, that we get paid for generating that power. That's the way we build it all along.
Yep, that's the whole, the whole strategy. So, that's, that's why I was just checking in on that last piece of making sure the money comes back in, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we can circle back around with Scott, or.
And it does feel like the sort of question I wouldn't be surprised to have someone stand up at town meeting and ask, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And so, any questions?
I'll take one from the audience.
Hi, Grace. Is it possible that the payment in March is for REX and that the power credit is monthly on the building statement?
That's not the way I understood it. Oh, I guess the other thing, the only other thing, you, thank you for dragging my memory. We, as I understand it, Jack Barrington from Barrington Power has, Jack from Barrington Power has applied to the Public Utility Commission for the ten thousand dollar rebate. I can circle back around with, to him, beginning of February, if I, if we haven't heard of, you know, the status on that?
That would be good.
And that check will go right to CDFA also, as I understand it. Is that correct, Ann?
That's right. We'll hold public hearings and bring that money in and expend it back out immediately, within thirty days.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions for Grace?
Good job, Grace. That was a lot of work.
Thank you. Thanks, Grace.
I'm exhausted.
For your sake, I hope that's your last update on this topic, that you can pick another topic to care about in town.
Mother Gordy and not untie.
Yeah, exactly, right. Uh, next up, Tom Newcomb. We have an order to remove and site clean up for two nineteen Old North Main Street.
Yes, so, good evening. Just sent your memo to summarize things, but in short, we have a house at two nineteen Old North Main Street. It was severely damaged in a fire back in April. The owners have done some work on it in terms of trying to demolish it and clear it up. They're doing the work themselves. There's been literally no activity on the site for the past four months or so. They have no plans for moving forward with it. So, in talking with town council, we would like to move forward with an order that will basically put some heat on them here going on this, and if they don't act in a timely manner, then the town can take action and clean up the rest of the property and put a lien on the property to recover our expenses. The first step is an action by this board to sign notices that will go to the owners and to their lender, putting them on notice that we have commenced with the process.
And I have that letter here, if you approve moving forward with it, for your signature, and we will get it back to town council to have it served.
Yes, I believe we need two original copies, one that gets sent to the property owner and one that gets sent to the lender.
I'll need to go print a second copy.
We have a one copy, but, thank you.
Certainly seems.
Certainly seems responsible on our part to do it, that they've had plenty of time, so.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to move forward with that activity.
Neil?
Second.
Any discussion?
I will say Tom has been very diligent in trying to work with the owners of that property to get them clean, get it cleaned up, and where they've left it creates quite a hazard with regards to the river flooding, with regards to the debris being in the yard. And like I said, Tom has been down there day after day, making calls after call to get them to clean up, and they've really just ignored Tom's efforts in getting that demolition cleaned up, of which they did obtain a permit for the demolition, but we have been very diligent about getting that area cleaned up, and they've refused to do it.
It could be expedited due to the fact that it's so proximity to the river.
And Tom has been in touch with DES. I don't know if you want to talk about that at all, Tom?
I did touch on it briefly in my memo, but when we had, back in mid-December, when we had some rains and we had some localized flooding, I did go down there and witness at the backyard with debris piles, they were inundated with water. Talked with three different individuals at DES. Basically, they kind of handed me off to different departments. One of them did do a site visit. He determined that at this point, it is out of their jurisdiction, but it is something that they're very concerned about and would like to see it cleaned up before it becomes a problem. And I happened to do another site visit there today, and there's been absolutely no activity, not even any footprints in the snow.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Always good to see you.
Who seconded your motion?
Neil.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, committee reports.
Planning Board hasn't had a meeting since the last meeting that I reported.
We have a meeting Thursday.
Thursday.
Meeting Thursday.
This Thursday. And Plymouth Village Water and Sewer Commission meets tomorrow night, and I'll be attending that meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Campus Community Council, nothing.
Nothing till spring.
Yes.
One moment, I have the notes on my phone. Let's see, they had a meeting on the sixth, I believe. There was discussion for additional Special Education Administrator. That was the, the position that I had talked about the previous time. They made some adjustments to the budget figures. One of the things of note was in the principal's report, they talked about an upswing in the number of students coming who have English as a second language. I guess this is a significant upswing.
Is that something I have to give you?
And so, that was going to possibly impact the budget going forward, because they'll have to potentially get extra services.
I did?
They had talk about the enrollment updates and classroom sizes. They have, still, the average classroom size is fairly small. Enrollment, they have like, I think, one grade where they have twenty students, which is at the upper end of, is that the upper end of where they feel that the, the size should be? They talked about having mid-year benchmark testing for student initiatives. Let's see. They did go over their warrant articles. They talked about them, and basically, this is not the official hearing, but they did talk about what was on them. And, and so, they made a motion to move forward on the, with the draft of those warrant articles for the hearing. That's pretty much the summary of the elementary school. Moving on to the high school, meeting was somewhat delayed. They had a lengthy non-public session before the meeting. The meeting itself was, I would say, ten minutes, and then that was followed by the budget hearing. So, most of the activity that I'll mention was really at the budget hearing.
Yep.
So, they briefly had a school updates, super industry report, which mostly talked about preparation for the upcoming budget hearing that was a few minutes later. They talked about a approval for two overnight field trips for the Grand Estate Challenge and the National Quiz Bowl Competition. Let's see. They did have a little bit of public participation in regards to impacts of taxes, use of grant money, and specifics of warrant articles. And then it largely adjourned and then moved into the, the budget hearing. They went over, there was very few questions on any of the line items on the budget itself. Most of the discussion really swirled around their field lighting. So, they detailed the, the warrant articles additionally to the budget. They went over all of those and explained what they are. And then during the budget, the, the Q and A on the budget meeting, there was a lot of concerns raised about the impacts on taxes of those lighting fixtures. The estimated price for installation for the lighting on the two fields was about seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Lot of questions regarding fundraising opportunities to offset some of those costs. Lot of the questions were similar to what had happened during a previous regular board meeting. You know, how, how do we get money for grants? There was questions about use of facilities. I will share that they estimated that with the lights installed, that they could have the games that they normally can't participate, and for four hours of operation, it would be approximately nine dollars in electricity. So, the electricity itself isn't really, I think, the major issue. I think the ra, the significant issue that was being discussed was how to pay, how to pay for the install costs and what that meant to taxes, which I think, I think everybody is fairly sensitive to. I'm not a hundred percent sure I, I know how aware the board was to the sensitivity of this issue. Clearly, during the, the board session, and I believe December, you know, there were a few voices in the audience that were concerned about it, and there was quite a little, quite a bit of deliberation on how to approach it, and ultimately, they decided to put the lighting issue as a warrant article, so that, you know, all the people in all the towns can weigh in on whether it's something they want, which I personally feel like that's the right way to approach it. Don't, don't try to put it in the budget, put it out there. If people want it, they'll get it, and if they don't, mostly that, up until the time that it's voted on, they ha, they can amend the article to revise the number down if they can get commitments for people to, you know, donate to the, the cause. And if it's approved, assuming that it's approved, they can continue donation efforts up until the time, I think it's right around September first, where they can, you know, where basically all the funds have to be committed, and they can use that to offset basically taxes. Largely, I would say it was a, it was a good discussion. They even brought up temporary lighting and how that was, you know, not an ideal situation. And so, that largely covers all the things that I believe were talked about.
Any questions for Ted?
Thanks.
There was a discussion about the budget going up another million dollars. Did you hear that at all?
Another million dollars? It was going up a little bit based on the collective bargaining agreement. It went up from like, I think it was like a couple hundred thousand.
Okay.
I don't think it was.
Not another million.
No.
No, but I think that the math that people were doing was a couple hundred thousand for the union contract, plus the seven hundred and fifty thousand for this. Gets you to the million.
All right.
That's, that's.
I saw the Facebook conversation as well, yeah.
Okay, I didn't see that one, yeah.
Good, thank you.
The other thing that's challenging with the high school always is that that's not seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Plymouth to pay.
It's spread out over the.
Right.
Not that that, you know.
We, we still will pay.
You don't want additional expenditure, you know, and we have a bigger share, and it's still complicated, but.
Is it per capita?
It's based on, it's based on the, the.
Enrollments. I know, the assessed value. It's actually two, isn't it two-parted? Isn't half of it based on?
I will say, I don't know the exact formula.
I'm pretty sure the formula is half of it's based on assessment value and half of it's based on headcount.
Yeah.
I think the budget committee, one of the members there indicated it was twenty-five percent is the town implements.
That sounds about right.
I remember when the, when the school was deliberating about the, having a certain campus, half the time it's going to be at DES and half the time it's going to be at the high school, but Plymouth was basically paying fifty, fifty percent of it based on the, you know, other town picking up part of the high school time, I think.
Yes.
Sounds about.
It's, the high school's complicated, is, I guess, the, the main point. All right, Conservation?
Uh, they did not meet in December. They have a meeting next week, Tuesday, the, I don't remember the date. Tuesday of next week at seven PM right here.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, okay. I, I thought that's what it was, but I didn't want to commit without looking.
Nothing from capital improvement, uh, no bill for LRPC, Parks and Rec?
Park and Recs has not met since fall, to my knowledge.
Okay. Parking and Economic Development, nothing there. Energy Commission, got, we got a little bit from Grace. We'll call that good. Nothing from advisory budget. PSU negotiations is.
Nothing till spring.
Nothing till spring. Chamber met. The main thing was the, the big travel and tourism event that they have coming up. Tickets are all sold out on that, so that's a good, successful event that they've put together there. I don't, I think the award ceremony nominations are open right now, so if you want to nominate anybody for, you know, being a outstanding business in the community, that's open. Otherwise, that's, I mean, those are the big updates, I think. No Perlac.
I don't think they had a meeting.
Anything from fire in building, fire building?
Cover and I are meeting tomorrow afternoon at one-thirty, um, after the holidays, in order to get a meeting scheduled and discuss some other options with regards to that project.
All right. Sounds good. And. And union, union negotiations are at rest for a year.
And we do have both of the contracts, Ann needs to review the professional firefighters contract that I received today. But otherwise, both contracts are in order and we will have those ready for after town meeting.
Perfect. That takes us to public comments. Where's Frank when you need him?
He's hibernating.
Yeah, he probably is.
Motion to adjourn?
Neil, you get to second it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Anybody want to stay here for the rest of the day?